Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the Gig Harbor City Council meeting of Monday, July 25th, 2022. The time is 5:31 PM. And I will turn it over to our city clerk for a roll call.
Councilmember Barber?
Here.
Councilmember Denson?
Here.
Councilmember Henderson is excused. Councilmember Lykins?
Here.
Councilmember Rodenberg?
Here.
Councilmember Storset? And Councilmember Wook?
Here. Can we hear you, Seth?
Yes, you can.
How good we can.
I hit the spacebar, but it wasn't on the right page. Thanks.
Okay, no worries. I'm glad we can hear you. Okay, would you all please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God,
indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Before we begin this council meeting, we would like to recognize that we are gathered on not only the ancestral and traditional lands of the Skavash Band of the Pialup Tribe of Indians, but also on the site of one of the largest and longest-standing historic villages of the people, the original inhabitants of the Gig Harbor area. Changes to the agenda this evening, I have one, and then I'll ask council if they have any. We have added an executive session to the end of the meeting, and so we will read and state that RCW at that time. Any council members that have any changes to the agenda this evening? Okay, seeing none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstained? Okay, motion passes six zero. Thank you, council. So we will move on to the mayor's report. I want to thank Chapel Hill Presbyterian Church. They are the city's emergency shelter, and they have opened up a cooling center this week, as we know, and are starting to experience the heat wave, but it's coming in full force tomorrow. So they were open today, 12:30 to 4:30, and they're open Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday from 12:30 PM to 8:30 PM. Their lobby is open. For those, you can find their information on our Facebook page, on their Facebook page, our police department's Facebook page, but also their address is 770 Scansy Avenue Northwest in Gig Harbor, and you can enter Door D to access the lobby. And they're using their lobby as a cooling center, so we're really grateful to them for doing this. I want to thank all the volunteers that are helping out over there and them providing water and snacks and just a place for people to get away if their AC breaks, or for those of us that just need a break from the heat. So thank you Chapel Hill so much. And then I wanted to give a shout out. I know, welcome back, Chief Bucie from vacation. Lieutenant Douglas was acting police chief while he was here, and I wanted to just thank Fred and all of our officers for their outstanding work in the last few weeks, especially with all of the fires that we have had, thefts, bank robberies, just, you know, crazy, crazy times in our city and all around the nation, but specifically unusual for Gig Harbor. And so I wanted to thank the Gig Harbor Fire Department as well. They were amazing in responding to these fires. And in case people hadn't heard, our bank robber is in jail where he belongs, so one less criminal on the streets, and thank you to our detectives and their amazing work, and thank you to the Paulsboro Police Department for their assistance as well, and Kitsap County Sheriff. So many people to thank in helping to apprehend that person. So Kelly, you have a great team over there, and we were in good hands while you were having a great time, and so just thank you to our entire police department, thank you to our fire department, and all our first responders for just keeping our minds at ease and taking good care of us. So.
Mayor, I'm hearing I can go back on vacation.
Yeah, no, you can't. No, you can't. There we go. We're glad you're back. I will turn it over to our city administrator Katrina Knutson for her report.
Thank you, Mayor. Council this evening, I have two updates. One is regarding staffing. I will share my screen. This update is an effort to keep you updated on where we are with filling the city vacancies. As you can see, our list is much shorter than it has been in the past, and this is largely due to our excellent HR team being led up by interim HR Director Shannon Costanti. But her whole team is just really knocking it out of the park, getting us great applicants, following up quickly, and we are approaching fully staffed, so wanted to provide you that update. You will see up here that we still are looking for a public works assistant. That is to fill a lease process who retired and moved to the East Coast. We're looking for a wastewater operator in training, two maintenance technicians, senior engineer, a community development director, a construction supervisor, and then lateral police officers is continuously open. And Kelly, I believe with Officer Dominguez coming back, it consists at 21 commissioned officers. Is that correct?
That is correct. We will be at, for the first time, our fully budgeted 21 positions. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. So we are very excited about this. And then at the bottom here, Shannon has outlined that these are who we have either interviews pending or folks that we're hiring. So we do have public works labors coming on that I'll describe. Finance technician Kelly Brooks will be starting with us on August 8. And then we have two internal postings, one for public work superintendent, the other for wastewater superintendent to fill Penn and Andrews and Darrell Wyman's positions. And those were posted internally only, and we will, interviews are pending for those. And then just today, we closed, or we're closing on our other utility billing technician and hope to have that information to you soon. Also, in support of council's number one priority of fostering a healthy city organization, in particular with retaining our existing workforce, I wanted to show you our commitment to staffing promotions when there is qualified staff that are existing and positions become available to show that we're working toward retaining our workforce here. And these are all positions of folks that were existing city staff that have now been promoted into new roles as of this year. And so we really are trying our best to foster a healthy city organization by being an exemplary employer, retaining the people that we have, which we know not only reduces recruitment costs but increases institutional knowledge. And so just a big shout out to all of those that are on this list that have stepped up in a big way to support us and our residents. Lastly, so that was the good part. The bad part is that the concert that was to take place tomorrow has been postponed due to the excessive heat. And so the paper boys who were to be playing tomorrow night have been moved to September 6 due to the excessive heat that's in our region. And so we're getting that out onto our socials right now, also putting signs down at the park. I will say that this is also consistent with the Downtown Waterfront Alliance, who has canceled the farmer's market for this week due to 96, 97 degree temperatures that are expected. So wanted to let you know first, but that will be on our Facebook pages, Instagram, as well as posted down at the park early tomorrow morning. And we look forward to having a paper voice in September.
Councilmember Wook? What was that date again, in September?
The 6th.
Thank you.
Welcome. And the beat mix will be next Tuesday, and that is going on as planned. So if you have plans to get your chair down there for the beat mix, that's next Tuesday. Thank you, Mayor.
I'm taking it tonight. No.
Yeah, thank you for understanding, council. We want to keep our staff safe. We want to keep our community safe, and we're not used to these temperatures around here, so we're better to postpone than to have someone have heat stroke or something serious. So Councilmember Denson? You're muted.
Sorry, I took my hand down instead of unmuting. I just wanted to give a shout out to Public Works employee Dan, who is always down there at the concerts, and he's so fun, and everyone loves him, and he's right there answering questions with whatever council members are there, and he's just awesome. And also, our volunteer cops do a great job helping everybody out down there. So thanks for all that.
Yeah. Yes, we have an amazing team, really truly amazing. Okay, thank you so much. We will move right along to public comment on non-agenda items. Josh, were there any written submitted public comments?
No, we have no written comments this evening.
Okay. Anyone in our audience, and thank you for being here tonight, audience, who wishes to speak? You can press star nine on your phone or the raise hand button on the bottom of your screen. Okay, we have caller ending in eight seven four, and then if you would please state your full name and address for the record, and you will have three minutes.
Good evening, Mayor. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, I can.
Okay, can the council also?
Yes, heads nodding, yes.
Okay, so anyway, this is Thomas Wick, Hunt Street Northwest, and I want to touch on a couple of things this evening. One is ordinance 1465. I watched that video of the city council meeting when that was approved, and I believe the city council, and I believe the mayor at the time, said there was going to be a six-month review, evaluation of that ordinance, see how it was working, if it was working, not working. So anyway, just last week, the city of Gig Harbor gave me an official statement, so to speak, that the request for public records dated September 25th, 2020 will not be completed. And that's a little bit of a concern. I know one of the council members repeatedly referred to public records requests as fishing expeditions. That specific request for public records was actually pre-litigation, and I disclosed that when I identified how the records needed to be provided. So I would ask that if there's one city council person that has a concern for transparency in government, which equals honest and open government, I would like one of those council people tonight to make a motion to at least start the process to withdraw ordinance 1465 as drafted. The other issue is Resolution R9596, dated April 18th, 19... ...standards. It says, "Within the Gig Harbor UGA, the county shall review all development applications through the county stormwater and drainage standards." The problem with that ordinance as drafted is that if you're not in the UGA and your Pierce County property adjoins the city of Gig Harbor, there's no care, concern, or regard for the drainage conditions on the downhill Pierce County properties. So same as the public records, I mean ordinance 1465. If there's one council person that's listening tonight that cares about wetlands, famine streams, critical areas, environmentally sensitive lands, and other community members, I would ask that they also put forward a motion tonight to at least get the process started, to reevaluate that resolution, update the city code and their...
You have 30 seconds, Mr. Wick.
Can I? Yeah, thank you. Boy, that was terribly obnoxious, Mayor Markley, just today. I'm glad my cockatiel isn't with us any longer. It would have scared her. So anyway, I would ask that the motion, the council person that says, yes, this is a concern, I care about this, I would just ask that they put that up forward tonight just to look at it, evaluate it, and make the necessary changes so that... Make...
Your time is up, Mr. Wick.
Can I?
I'm sorry, the three minutes is up. Thank you so much for your comments. Appreciate it. Is there anyone else from the audience that wishes to speak tonight on a non-agenda item? Okay, seeing no hands raised, I will close the public comment on non-agenda items, and we will move to old business number one, which is the second reading and adoption of ordinance 1492, amending the advisory board appointment processes. And this report is from our city clerk, Josh Sticker.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, council members. This is the second reading of ordinance 1492. We have first reading in our last council meeting back on July 11. The sole purpose of this ordinance is just to revise the terms of the Parks Commission, Arts Commission, Design Review Board, and Lodging Tax Advisory Committee to make the appointments mayor-appointed and council confirmed rather than straight council-appointed. As we discussed in our study session and the last council meeting, we feel that state law requires that these positions on these committees be appointed by the mayor. So this ordinance simply brings us into compliance with that. If there's any clarifying questions on this, I'm happy to answer those for council.
Councilmember Wook? Yes, I have two clarifying questions. I don't see sections five and six in this ordinance. Is this a Scrivener's error? Is that what we're looking at? Is there a reason that nothing's numbered five or six?
Yes, that is a Scrivener's error on this.
Okay, thank you. And then the other question I have is about the internal procedures that the mayor is preparing. Do we know when they'll be available?
Mayor, I can respond to that if you'd like. Yep, councilmember Wook, we are actively working on them this week. We expect to have them on a work session to discuss with council in the work session in August, the first work session in August.
We have some folks, I think, that have applied for the planning commission. Is this being held until, is appointment to the planning commission being held until the until the new procedures are in place?
Yes, yes, we anticipate having the planning commission recommendations coming to council the first meeting in September.
Thank you. Any other clarifying questions from council? Okay, seeing none, I will open the public comment for this agenda item only. Josh, were there any written submitted comments?
There are no written comments for this item.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak on this agenda item? And again, you can press star nine on your phone or the raise hand button on the bottom of your Zoom screen. Okay, seeing none, I will close the public comment and open it up for council deliberation and action. Councilmember Barber?
I move to approve ordinance 1492.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. Second person, second. Councilmember Wook? Yes, thank you. So you know, I was chatting with some citizens this week, and one of the gentlemen I was speaking with said to me, obviously, the city is trying to hide something by taking away transparency from this process. So this process makes no procedure for transparency and how this is going to happen currently. The way that the boards and commissions applicants are approved is transparent, and interviews are placed online, so our citizens can listen to these interviews. Just because we are changing the way that these applicants are appointed and confirmed does not mean that we have to eliminate transparency. We can have anything in this ordinance that we want to put in here. And so I would make an amendment, propose an amendment, and this would be for section, new section six, and it would say advisory boards, commissions, and committee applicant interviews shall be published online prior to council confirming these appointments. Thank you. Is there a second? Okay, hearing none, the amendment does not pass. And Josh, maybe because there was that error, is there a way to put sections five and six on the screen just in case people need to see them or read them?
Let me share the screen of what's posted online so people can see.
Okay.
The issue is just a numbering issue. We go from section four to section seven. Section seven should be renumbered to section five.
Oh, okay.
Going down the line. So there's nothing missing from the ordinance. It just needs to be renumbered.
It's just the numbering. Okay, thank you for clarifying that. I was wondering if I was missing something, but that's great. Okay. Okay, are there, we have a motion on the table, and we have a second. Are there any other comments from council? Okay. So we have a motion to approve ordinance 1492 and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Any abstained? Okay, motion passes five to one. Thank you, council. We will move on to new business item number one, the first reading and adoption of ordinance 1493, amending the city's personnel salary schedule. And this is a report by our interim HR Director, Shannon Costanti. Welcome, Shannon.
Thank you so much, Mayor, and good summer evening, council. I'm really thrilled and honored by the opportunity to present to you for the first time this evening related to ordinance 1943, as the mayor has mentioned. As you may recall, during the budget planning cycle last fall, council approved a request to reclassify the court clerk and lead court clerk positions. As a result of how these roles have changed significantly over the last 10 years, you may recall some of that discussion and the material that supported all of that. This reclassification is intended to better represent the work being performed by two of these staff currently serving in the court clerk position, and ultimately supports, as Katrina mentioned a few moments ago, the city's first strategic priority of fostering a healthy city organization by retaining our existing workforce. When council approved this important change for the 2022 budget last year, the position was not yet included in the adopted salary schedule, which is an important administrative measure that has since been prepared and is being presented to you this evening. In order to proceed with reclassification of these positions, which was approved by council last year, staff is seeking council approval to amend the salary schedule, which is included with your materials this evening. The wage that you'll see listed in your materials has been presented and determined with market data for comparable positions in the area, which is defined by our collective bargaining agreement. We have comps that are established by way of our contract. So we've done some research based on that data and worked closely with the general non-supervisory unit of the Teamsters Union representing these positions, and we have it all prepared and have support and agreement with the union to proceed. So what I've shared with you this evening represents a summary of our request for this ordinance. If you have any questions, I'm glad to answer those that you may have now.
Thank you, Shannon. Any clarifying questions from council? Okay, seeing none, I will open the public comment on this agenda item only. Josh, were there any written comments submitted?
No written comments for this item.
Okay. Anyone in the audience wish to speak on this agenda item? You can press star nine on your phone or the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen. Okay, seeing none, we will close the public comment. And I will open it up for council deliberation and action. Councilmember Storset?
Yes, thank you. Well, first, just a comment. Shannon, nice to meet you virtually. I was considering just moving this to the consent agenda, but I want to hear from you. So, and I think I was able to do that, but...
Thank you.
So thank you for sharing this with us. I would motion to approve ordinance 1493.
Second.
Thank you. The motion and a second. I don't see any other hands raised, so all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Okay, motion passes six one. Thank you so much, council. And we will move on to our staff report, and this is our quarterly budget update by our finance director, Dave Rodenbach. Hi, Dave. Thanks for joining us this evening.
Good evening. Thank you, and good evening, members of council. Okay, I'll entertain any questions. On the first part, this is a two-part report. First part is financial. If you have any questions on the finances, I have nothing significant to report to you. We're tracking along fairly well, as can be expected.
Any questions from council so far? Okay, not seeing any, Dave.
Okay, next, please be kind. I don't believe Jeff is here, but the next part are the significant objectives in the budget. If you have any questions on those, I'll do my darndest to answer them. Otherwise, we'll take a note, and we'll get back to you.
Okay, Councilmember Wook? Yes, thanks. Thanks, Dave. Both of these reports are really good, especially on the budget update. It is so helpful to have the comments in the notes. It answers a lot of questions. I had a chat with Director Langham today and city administrator Knutson that answered some of my questions, since Jeff was going to be here this evening. There are two items that I do need to address, and I want to make sure this gets on the record. We need to have, we need this to be in the record on page 13 and 14. This is regarding the 33,000 History Museum driveway. That is an error, I think. It should not have been in there as an in-kind contribution. It is not an in-kind contribution, and the full 150,000 is to be for matching funds for the museum, and the 33,000 is to come from street funds. That was a conversation that I had with both Jeff and Katrina today, confirming that. So I just want to get that on the record. And the other thing, I have a question for you, Dave. On page 38 of 55, it talks about $125,000 for capital expenditures. Can you explain that to me?
I look at that as a placeholder should a capital expenditure come up that is lodging tax-eligible.
Okay.
It's no way obligated, and it's no way really reserved even. It's available.
Okay, great. Good explanation. That's all I have. Thank you so much. It was a good report, both of them. Thanks.
You're welcome.
Josh, I saw your hand was up there.
Yeah, Mayor, I just wanted to speak to the Maritime Gallery project. That is budgeted correctly in the report that you received. That is how we budgeted it in the book last year. We came to council back in April or May of this year, and I don't recall the correct date, but at that time, council did instruct us that this was going to be a full $150,000 with no in-kind. That's when the change was made in that. So the quarterly report will still show what was in the budget as adopted, but that has changed to be the full amount that Councilmember Wook is expecting.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you for that.
That's on the record in a minute, so it's not going anywhere.
Okay, thank you so much. Councilmember Denson?
Yes, thank you. I wanted to thank Public Works and Ms. Knutson for helping get new volleyball nets up at the volleyball court. That is a facility that is used, well-used, hard-used, which is exactly what we want to have happen. There's kids using it and adults all the time, and really making good use. And I like to see our stuff wearing out like that because it means that it's being used. It was a little concerning to me that, and Ms. Knutson, please correct me if I'm wrong, that we don't have any sort of pot of money available for replacing things like nets, because I was on the tennis court today and noticing that they're looking pretty ragged, too, and certainly things wear out at our playgrounds. Can you just explain how that works?
Yes. Excuse me, the Public Works Operating Fund or the Parks Operating Fund does not typically include expenditures for a project such as the nets and the volleyball, I have found out. So Matt, Kio, and Jeff Langham are working with Dave in this upcoming biennial budget to include a modest amount in Parks operating funds for replacement of things such as netting or if something else needs to be striped or if there's signs that need to be replaced, so that when we see something, we have funds to do something about it.
Thank you. Perfect.
And I would add that if we needed netting, we have the budget capacity to just go buy it, because my expectation is within some of our budget lines, we build in this normal wear and tear, and over history, you sort of see these things, and so usually we can accommodate things like that.
Great. Great. Any other...
Great. Any other questions from council for Dave? Okay, not seeing any. Thank you so much, Dave, for that report and for being so thorough always. We really appreciate the detail that you put into these reports. So thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And we will move on to council reports and comments. Councilmember Denson.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Over the last, well, I guess, six months or even longer, we all heard a great deal from our downtown businesses who were struggling with the impacts of construction. I know I heard from, from folks and from the executive director of the Waterfront Alliance that in some ways this construction had more detrimental impacts than even COVID did. It was really rough on them. So I would like council to consider providing a little bit of extra support for our downtown businesses in the form of an appropriation to the Downtown Waterfront Alliance to be used to support our downtown businesses during the fourth quarter, which is the slower time for them and an opportunity for them to hopefully catch up by year end. In terms of all the revenue that they've lost, let me give a quick disclaimer here to Daniel that I'm on the board of the Waterfront Association, so I don't know if that matters. So I wanted to make sure I disclosed that. And so it's a slower time for them. It will benefit the city in terms of increased sales tax if they can do some work to, to bring more folks downtown and into those shops. Obviously, it's going to help the businesses. And because of a really amazing state program where we get a public utility tax credit of seventy-five percent, if we, for example, were to appropriate fifteen thousand to the Downtown Waterfront Alliance, um, oh gosh, they would only cost us twelve thousand five hundred dollars. Is that right, Katrina? Did I do that math right? So right now, we're giving them fifty, or thirty-five thousand. If we added an extra fifteen thousand, that would be fifty thousand. We get seventy-five percent of that back.
We would get approximately thirty-seven thousand dollars back in the.
So that, so would only, so that fifty thousand dollar appropriation would only cost us twelve thousand five hundred, which is way less than we've given them any other year because we're taking advantage of this tax credit. So I think it, it's great for the city. It saves us money. Hopefully, it'll increase sales tax as well, and it'll really help the downtown businesses during a time where they need it. So I just wanted to bring that up for you all to think about. If you have questions about the public utility tax, you can ask me or Ms. Knudsen or Dave Rodenbach. It's a, it's a great program. We should be taking advantage of more. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember Denson. Uh, let's see, councilmember Look.
Yes, thank you. Last Thursday, I attended the Pierce County Regional Council monthly meeting. And, and also I attended the Puget Sound Regional Council Growth Management Policy Board representing the PCRC. And I discussed at both of those meetings was House Bill twelve twenty. And this is the middle housing bill. And Department of Commerce said there would be a tool coming out to help cities. It was supposed to be here Friday. City Administrator Knudsen, did we get a tool? Thank you.
I have not received it yet.
Thank you. Also, Jason was there representing SHAPE. And I think that was, he made a really good presentation. And when he did, he also talked, as he did to us, about a number of boards that Pierce County does not sit on. Those two boards are the Affordable Housing Advisory Board and the Washington State Housing Finance Commissioners Board of Commissions. For the Pierce County not to have a say in affordable housing in our state, it seems to be inwise. And it is even more concerning to me that about the only way we get to have a voice, Pierce County gets to have a voice, is that someone has to resign from one of these boards or there has to be a vacancy somehow. And so I know that Mayor Markley's working on this with SHAPE and with Jason, and so it's just, it's a little concerning and, and hopefully that, I know Jason's working on it hard to try to, to try to get Pierce County's voice heard. It's, it's sort of sad, I think. We also had a really good presentation, of course, by Vision, on Vision twenty fifty and the requirements for getting our comp plan passed. And I believe that Puget Sound Regional Council is going to be sending out some information on, on that as well to cities. And, and as we know, getting a comp plan passed goes a long way to getting the cities more grants. So that, those are my reports from meetings. So just, I want to thank, I've been listening to some emails going back and forth between the city and the boat shop, and I'm looking forward in the future and the soon-to-be future of getting an MOU on the boat shop for Ed and Boathouse. Now that that's getting done, it'd be nice if our citizens had a way to use that. I have a kudos to Laura and her team in tourism for the weekly department updates. The information is invaluable, and I get a lot of calls from citizens on lots of things, and it really is a good way for me to give them some verified information. And the last thing I want to mention is about suit bark. And this is the problem that is happening on maple trees. And we know that it's in Tacoma. And the problem why it's so bad is it's not only bad for the trees, but I believe it's a fungus. And I believe it's also bad for people that are working with the trees. So I know that we're going to have a new arborist. And I'm hoping Director Knudsen, the City Administrator Knudsen, is there any way that we can get our maple trees looked at to see if we're experiencing that issue in Gig Harbor?
Yes, councilmember Luke, I believe tonight on consent, the council passed a fee schedule amendment that would allow for us to charge for the arbor services. And on the August eighth meeting, I anticipate Principal Planner Carl DeCemis coming forward with the contract for the on-call arborist as well as a contract with a firm for our urban forest management plan. And so we will be able to have certain trees evaluated after council signs that contract with on-call arborists.
Great. Thanks so much. Thank you.
Great. Thank you for those reports, and I agree. We, I, we are working very hard with SHAPE to have Pierce County have a voice and a seat at the table for those discussions. So thanks for attending those meetings. It's very informative. Um, councilmembers Starset.
Yes, I have a few comments. So first, I'll double the compliment that Jenny gave about the staff updates. Those are really helpful, especially, which I'll tie it into my next piece, is going to the farmer's market. So we can have our agendas, we can have our schedule, but having that, that really live information on a weekly basis is extremely helpful. So I was doing a refresher before I came, which was very good. So farmer's market, I was there with Mary, councilmember Barber, and it was hot and the little breeze that we got mostly blew away the things on our table. Really nice to see so many citizens come up to the table, a lot of youth wanting to hear about the different concerts and music in the park. So hopefully they get the update that everything, you know, is canceled or postponed for this week. Because we, we did a good job, I think, of promoting that. Also want to give a shout out to the fire department. I mean, the three, thing was three days in a row, or it may have been three fires within four days, but amazing response, especially the one down on the waterfront. To hear that they had just drilled on that a few weeks prior is amazing because it's something you can do these, you know, this prep and be prepared, never knowing when it's going to happen. And they responded extremely well. So thank you. And then last thing, stopped by the, the boat shop. They had the open house where they're doing, they're showing, they were showing the, the model of the boat they're building, but the gentleman Mike from Croatia, he gave me the full back history on it. He tried to sell me on a couple of different names. We, there will be a vote for that, but really cool hearing his story. Had a great conversation with him around sister cities because he really wants to promote and push that. He's going to work through the Rotary Club. But really good time to just encourage people to get down there and see it. It's open all the, it's like the signs open all the time. If you look down the boatway, if it says open, just walk in and they're happy to see you. So thank you. That's all I have.
Great. Thank you so much, councilmember Starset. Councilmember Barber.
Yes, a quick report from the Tacoma Narrows Advisory Committee meeting last week. I don't have a lot to report, but just all tie-downs and hangers at the airport are full and have waiting lists. So if you have a airplane you need to put there, you probably need to find somewhere else. Um, and also mowing the grass obviously is a full-time job during the summer down at the airport. So they have two, two new seasonal employees. And also an operations technician who works for the airport. Um, part-time for the airport and part-time for the Anderson Island Ferry, which they also manage. Um, the airport is looking for tower operators. So if you know somebody who might be qualified for that work, have them check out the website for those opportunities to help us out. And there was also an environmental assessment that was just completed that found nothing of significant interest, which is always good when you're doing that kind of an audit. Um, and they are looking for the county to release some already budgeted and approved funds to finish the FAA compliance projects that they have had on their list. And finally, they may do an airport day in September that where they'll invite people over to visit the airport, see static displays and that kind of thing. So more information coming on that when we get it.
Great. Thank you so much. City Administrator Knudsen.
Thank you, Mayor. In getting back to a councilmember Denson's discussion regarding the Downtown Waterfront Alliance, it would be really wonderful to get a show of hands from council if there was support for that. So that we can prepare the amendment to the agreement with the Downtown Waterfront Alliance for their funds as well as the budget documentation for that fifteen thousand that councilmember Denson was talking about. Again, that would bring our total to Downtown Waterfront Alliance to fifty thousand dollars. So if we could, if council's comfortable with, you know, maybe nodding and so we know we should prepare that for the eighth or if we should not prepare that for the eighth, that would be great.
Okay, I'm seeing nods and hands and another hand. Yes. Okay, thank you so much. I was going to do that. Thank you for beating me to it. Appreciate that. Okay, we will, we will move forward with that and bring that back to council soon. And then I just wanted to add really quickly, going back to the sister cities, thank you to council for approving that MOU with Buda, Norway. Um, this is very exciting and we now, it's the first step in now going forward with our sister city program, which is to be determining for exactly how this is going to work and who the contact people are going to be and all of that. But we will be discussing that and then bringing that to council as well shortly. So at least we, we have our, our first step and it's, it's very exciting. So thank you so much for that and we'll keep everyone informed as we go through that process and let you know when we've got something final to present. So, um, announcement of upcoming meetings, we just, we have our sitting meeting schedule online attached to the agenda. So you can view that. And at this time, we will now go into executive session for ten minutes to discuss the acquisition of real estate per RCW four-two-point-three-zero-point-one-one-zero parentheses B. And no action will be taken following the executive session. So council, there's a link in your email should be to go into executive session. If you are missing that, just give Josh a quick ring. So log out of this meeting and log into that link, and then we will log back into this meeting to adjourn after we're done. So we should be returning roughly around six twenty-four, six twenty-five. Welcome back to the Gig Harbor City Council Study Session of July twenty-fifth. The time is six twenty-four PM. We have returned from executive session where no action will be taken. So I will entertain a motion to adjourn unless there's anything else for the good of the order.
I move we close.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Rodenberg.
Second. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Meeting adjourned. Have a wonderful evening, everyone, and stay safe in this heat.